Test, test, test. Alright guys, we are up and live on YouTube, so we can get started anytime.
We're ready to go? Alright, welcome Mark and everyone else on this planning commission to planning commission meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. We will have a opening ceremony, we'll have a pledge by Nan and a prayer by Gavin. So, if you'll please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet as a planning commission today and to consider the the needs and the future of our city. We are grateful for the good people who live here and for the safety and prosperity that we have around us. We give the gratitude for this beautiful valley that we live in. Help us to make wise choices, to consider the needs and rights of all the citizens that may be impacted by our decisions. Can we say this in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ, amen?
Amen. Thank you Gavin. We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
A second? Right Gavin.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. Gavin made the motion and Heather seconded to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Next, I have minutes.
Do we have them from two?
Just two from May fifteenth and June fifth, I think that's right what I had. Hopefully all of you said have had a chance to look over there, these. And we will need a motion to approve the minutes.
I actually looked them over and I'll make that motion.
Good for you Theresa, we should. So Theresa made the motion, any accept, anybody second it?
I'll second.
Alright, Theresa moved and Heather seconded to approve the minutes, I'll improve the minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and June fifth, twenty twenty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, well we have a new planning commissioner, Deidra Hartwell. And I've asked Deidra if she'd just take a minute to kind of introduce herself to us, would you please?
Yeah, I'm originally from Burley Idaho and came to Logan to go to school. I was political science major and met my husband while doing an internship in DC in the senate where he was working, but he was also from southern Idaho and not very far up the road, which was kind of crazy that we didn't know each other. And he is now a professor at Utah State, we have three kids. I've been heavily involved with PTA at the local council and region level. I'm especially getting involved in advocacy, so legislative work in the past couple of years. And I'm excited to be here. I told the mayor that I got a little nervous when I started saving things about planning a year ago and thought, what am I doing? So apparently I was preparing myself for this unknowingly, so.
Well, thank you, welcome, it's nice to have you here with us.
Thank you.
These are good people and you get to sit by Porter, so you're lucky. Alright, Scott, do you want to give us a follow-up on previous meeting?
Yeah, just two quick items, city council last night reviewed both the East Haven and the Village Springs subdivisions. Both of those subdivisions were a little bit unique, where they had right-of-way vacation associated with both of those. And then the East Haven subdivision had the legislatively adopted development agreement with a couple of zoning modifications. Both of those were reviewed, council had a few questions but did pass both of those subdivisions. And they did want to pass on their things, especially with the East Haven subdivision for some of the creative thinking that went into that that development and some of the connections that we were able to make for connectivity and just make for a better outcome. So they wanted to pass on their things on that, on that item. But those are just the two things I wanted to follow up on from our last meeting that have moved forward with the city council.
Great, thank you. Well, let's move right along to item number one, work session, Scott, do you want to take us on that one?
Yeah, so we just have a couple of items here, work session. So for everybody who may be listening online, I wanted to just kind of backtrack a little bit, just to give everybody a little bit of context. We have been working with the planning commission since February on several text amendments and text revisions to our land use ordinance. Specifically with the intent to integrate our general plans, goals and policies. There's a lot of different items in our general plan that we identified through that process that we want to put into the code so that we are using those and bringing those goals to reality, you know, one development at a time as the code is exercised. So we've been working our way through the code specifically titled twelve C, which is the land use ordinance in the city's municipal code. And we've been, we've been working through the various subsections. What we want to talk about today specifically is, I'm going to go to our our GIS, we can have a little bit of context with the map here. What we want to do is look at Main Street in the, in the general plan as we surveyed the public and we had some dialogue. We, we recognize that Main Street could use an extra measure of attention with new development and redevelopment specifically pertaining to aesthetics, but also making sure that we are using our limited commercial space in, in the best possible way. We identified early on in the general plan that our community is unique in Cash Valley at least in that we are an infill-only community. We really don't have a lot of opportunity to annex outward. And our commercially viable spaces are important to maintain and to utilize wisely as they, they do, you know, provide tax revenue to help supplement the rest of our, our community's needs. So when we're looking at Main Street specifically in the general plan, you know, the goals of that area was to, to look at use. We wanted to make sure that we weren't occupying those spaces with lower lower uses. The word I'm looking for is just active uses, you know, you don't want to have a lot of just large commercial that don't generate a lot of trips, that don't have a lot of people, they're not activated. And for that reason, we pulled storage units out of the commercial areas a few years ago, heading in that, that policy direction where they're just kind of there, but they don't generate a lot of activity. And that's kind of the intent, I think behind the general plan is that we, we put an extra measure of aesthetics, but also higher intensity uses on our main street and make those areas perform for the city. What we want to look at with this set of code is specifically the blocks between thirty-one hundred north and twenty-five hundred north, Main Street and Second West. And then also the half-block east of Main Street between that same block there. This area is largely undeveloped or underdeveloped. We have quite a bit of greenfield that is left that we can, we can easily develop it when and if the right opportunities come along. We want to set up our zoning to facilitate or to, you know, to make sure that we're, we're having the right types of uses approach the city. So what we want to call this area is a Main Street commercial gateway. And the idea being, Main Street is one of our gateways, you know, from the south coming in and also from the north coming south. It's one of the, the primary corridors that cuts through the, the community. So it is, it is technically a gateway, but we want to focus more on commercial activity and not as much on industrial or automotive or manufacturing. So that's kind of the intent, let's hop over to the folder. And let's look first off on this twelve C dash one hundred. This would be a new zoning classification, right now in Main Street, the zoning is just a simple commercial general. Let me pull up the zoning map and we can take a look at the, the current zoning. So the, the colors you see superimposed now, the, on the far west side, this is our manufacturing commercial. It's our heaviest intensity zoning, where we, we allow for everything up to a moderate intensity manufacturing, which is defined, you know, in our code, so it's not like, you know, it's not, it's not going to be a steel mill and smelting of materials and that heavy of industrial, but it does have, you know, monitoring or impact. Manufacturing, tilt wall, warehousing, logistics, those types of heavier, you know, uses out, out west. We have some, we have some equipment storage yards for some larger contractors and, and that's kind of the intent, you know, on this manufacturing commercial. The red that is, you know, a couple of blocks off of Main Street in either direction, that's our general commercial. And when you look at the general commercial closely, as far as the permitted and conditionally permitted uses, it's, it's pretty much anything and everything other than residential. You can do quite a bit in general commercial, it does stop short of the moderate impact manufacturing, but it does still allow for light impact manufacturing. It still allows for, you know, storage yards for, you know, contractors and those types of heavier intensity commercial. And it's just to kind of a catch-all, it's big box commercial, it's medium box commercial, it's office, it's restaurant. It's, it's literally just about everything you could, you could put into that zone. So with, with the intent of the general plan, we want to whittle that down a little bit and make it more specific to a commercial gateway. And, you know, maybe pull some of the uses out that aren't really to a gateway environment. So let's hop into this language real quick, read the purpose statement of this new classification. It reads that the purpose of the Main Street commercial gateway zone is to implement the community's vision as outlined in the city's general plan. Create a vibrant cohesive commercial corridor along Highway ninety-one. That serves as one of the city's major gateways and transportation corridors. The MSCG zone will seek to balance economic vitality with improved aesthetics while offering a distinct community identity. So similar to the twenty-five hundred north gateway, but a little bit, a little bit different.
So, so is this zone a district as well, or what district from the general plan is it in?
It's in that, let's open it up. Let's go look at that future land use map of the general plan to also provide some context for. So here's the future land use map. When we adopted the general plan, we knew that there was going to be, you know, certain districts throughout town, right? And a district is different than zoning, zoning is a classification, a district is kind of a general area. We stopped short of calling them neighborhoods, but they're, you know, they're just kind of big blobs on the map that generally there are some goals in the general plan to, to guide future, you know, development in those areas. On this Highway ninety-one district, it is still Highway ninety-one. There's, there's kind of two sections of Highway ninety-one, right? There's the north side, north of twenty-five hundred, and then there's the south side. The south side, obviously quite a bit more developed and established with existing, you know, development. So throughout this south side, there's much more infill or redevelopment opportunities versus the north side is much more greenfield and more opportunities for just fresh new development, right? So the, the barrier of entry is a little bit less on the north side. There's some more opportunities for some master planning, maybe a larger commercial, master planned block could be a potential in this area because there's, again, you know, there's fewer buildings in the way. South of, of twenty-five hundred north, that's where we've got smaller parcels and, and fewer parcels to work with for fresh development, it would be more redevelopment at that point. So yeah, we're looking at this north end part of this Highway ninety-one district that is called out in the general plan. And if you look further down, if we go to the Highway ninety-one district sub-section that kind of specifically speaks to this area in more detail. So here we are, the Highway ninety-one district aims to create a vibrant cohesive commercial corridor. It serves as one of North Logan's gateways and major transportation corridors. Again, it seeks to balance the economic vitality with improved aesthetics, traffic management and a distinct community identity. So this, this language is nearly verbatim between the general plan's guidance and what is in the draft purpose statement for this new zoning classification. I did, I did strike traffic management. It seemed a bit awkward, I, I don't know that it's our intent to manage traffic. Main Street is not a North Logan City road, it's not a North Logan City facility, it's a UDOT road. And we, we often, you know, beat our heads against the wall with, with UDOT when we're trying to, to manage access on, on Highway ninety-one. So we could leave that in, if we wanted to keep it verbatim to, to the general plan. I just don't know that is the intent of this zoning classification to manage traffic. I think in any economic development opportunity where you are looking to increase traffic. I mean, as hard as it is to say, folks hate traffic, but it's actually good for commercial development.
And we don't want to manage it, okay.
Yeah. So in a nutshell, we would like to create a zoning classification that specifically would occupy this space between Second West and fifty East, maybe First East, if you were to call it this mid-block section through here. If we turn off the zoning boundary, you'll see that there are still several parcels on the east side that are underdeveloped or, or ready for redevelopment, some older uses that could easily, you know, have a new, a new a new purpose. So that's kind of the intent of this.
East of Wolfpack Way is the high school, right there?
Correct, yeah, so here's, here's the ice arena.
Yeah, okay.
Here's the ice arena, here's, here's Green Canyon. And if, if we look, if we look at this map real quick and just kind of take a mental snapshot and hop back over to the general plan future land use map. Wolfpack Way has its own corridor, it has its own goals and objectives. It's very much different than what the goals and objectives are for Highway ninety-one. And you'll see just east of Highway ninety-one, this half-block is part of that that area where, where we think that it, there's a, there's a clear distinction between, sorry, between what is accessed off of Wolfpack Way and then what's accessed off of Main Street. So that's where we have a little sliver of pink east of Main Street.
And so I, I know that we haven't explicitly tied certain zoning to districts, but this zone, if created, could apply to both the north and the south if a developer wanted to consider that.
That's right, and I think it's, it's more the intent because there's fewer properties that are developed in this area. I think it's the intent of the city to explore going ahead and changing the zoning in this area as a city initiative. And then if folks south of Main Street want to take advantage of this classification, they could request it as a zone change. I don't know that there's many distinctions in this zone that would be that would be something that, that a property owner south of twenty-five hundred north would be looking to change to. If anything, this, this zoning classification is going to be more restrictive than the general commercial that you see further to the south. And I do think that there is some work in our general commercials zone, our existing zone, that we could make some tweaks to, to help redevelopment south of twenty-five hundred, be a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. But I think that the, the, the larger goal is to address this north portion with this new zoning classification. And then we can make some tweaks on the general commercials zoning classification for any new development or redevelopment south of twenty-five hundred. Okay, so if you look at the, at the, the rest of this ordinance, it follows the, the very similar pattern that the rest of the zoning classifications follow. So it talks about the permitted and conditional uses in that zone. And if we hop over and look at the master land use table and you look at that column in the zoning matrix, you'll pass the residential tables and look at the commercial tables. You'll see that there's a new column being added for this Main Street commercial gateway zone here. And when you, when you scroll through, you'll see that there's quite a few more X's specifically on the heavier intensity uses. For example, we would not allow for a used car dealership on that north portion of Main Street. Used car, yes, and automotive service, yes, if it's associated with a new car dealership. But we don't want to have many more, if any, automotive repair facilities on that north corridor portion. Let's see if we poke through, there are still some things in here that are still a permitted use. Specifically, you'll see that all the restaurant uses are still there. Hospitality hotel uses will still be there. Municipal fire, police station, you know, we might have that in the future and need, need some type of a facility on Main Street. Trying to think of what else is specifically called out. Utilities, of course, those need to be there. Recreation facility, we wanted to make sure that that was captured, that, that will make sure that the new rush complex is legally conforming to, to that area. So recreation facilities, fitness facilities, those types of things, cinema, theater. That's the intent, we're trying to reduce outdoor storage. If you hop back over to the, the document, we're talking about so these three points here. All uses in the zone shall be conducted entirely within a fully enclosed building except those uses deemed by the land use authority to be customarily and appropriately conducted in the open. And that's, you know, for example, you, you may have a bigger box store that comes in and maybe they have a small yard for, let's just take Lowe's, for example. And we're not going to get another large hardware store, but they do have an outdoor storage area for, you know, some of their seasonal items, it's inventory. And that's where we would say, yeah, that's customary and, and ordinary to be outside. But further down, we want to say that even with indoor storage, we want that to be limited to no more than ten percent. Meaning we don't want large warehouses with just a small commercial storefront. We kind of made that step of a couple of years ago where we said no warehouses within three hundred and thirty feet of Main Street and anything within three hundred and thirty and six hundred and sixty feet of Main Street have to have at least a retail component. So we want to take that a step further and say, within this zone, you can have some indoor storage for your inventory, of course, but we don't want that to be the, the large portion of what is, is associated with the land use. And anything that is outdoor has to be something that we look at specifically and, and make that finding that it is customarily and appropriately conducted in the open. So it gives us a little bit of discretion to say, yeah, sometimes it does make sense to have a little bit of outdoor storage, but not a ton. IFA, for example, they have some outdoor storage of some of their fencing materials and, you know, their, their ranching stores, so they have some of those items outdoors.
Do cars on a car lot count as inventory conducted outside?
Yeah, so that's where we could say, hey, if it's, if it's inventory, that's customary. There are some pitfalls though, I mean, there are some pretty I don't want to make any specific examples, but where the, where the inventory is not aesthetically pleasing to look at. Those are things we, we may want to further describe in, in this, this zoning intent. And that's, that's difficult to put on paper because it's, you have to be able to describe it specifically. So the, I think what we're trying to get to is to say, what is ordinary and customary? Was it customarily and appropriately conducted in the open? So I think that there's some, some discretion given to the land use authority. When you look at the land use matrix, some of those elements that are conditional permits, those will come to the planning commission as the land use authority, so you would have that discretion when and if that type of a use comes to you. If it's a permitted use and it comes to me as a zoning administrator to look at and make the fine, that is, that is appropriate or no, that's pushing it too far. That's the intent, we want to make sure that we're not having a bunch of, you know, tilt wall warehouses right off of Main Street with a bunch of indoor storage. We don't want a bunch of outdoor storage either unless it's, you know, specifically associated with the use. Okay, so that, that's one of the bigger elements is we want to cut down on warehousing. We don't want this to become just a warehouse, you know, with a bunch of truck traffic dropping off and taking deliveries out on our stretch of Main Street. We want to preserve it for commercial opportunities, retail opportunities, food and beverage, hospitality, those types of things. So the other thing I wanted to kind of chat with you guys about and we maybe get some feedback on is the height. So right now, in the commercial general zone, we do have a height limitation of no greater than thirty-five feet, which typically is a two-story with a gabled roof, gets you to, to thirty-five feet. And you might be able to get a third story if you have a flat roof, they're pretty small, you know, floors if that's the case. And I'm, I'm curious if we feel like this portion of Main Street, we should go ahead and increase that to forty-five or fifty feet to just say a third story is okay. Does that feel like the right scale for that north portion of Main Street? Do we want to limit our ability to go vertical? Now, there's always limitations with parking, they can only put so many square feet on a parcel because of parking and landscaping and stormwater. So they are somewhat naturally limited by some of those other variables that have to be accommodated within a project. But I do wonder if, if opening this up to a fourth story or a third story might be appropriate for us to do.
I think of like a hotel or something if they wanted to come in. Like three stories isn't massive, but it would feel different.
It feels almost as if some, some hotels would, would certainly want to be taller than that.
Yeah, at least three stories.
Yeah, that's.
At least three.
So like, I'm trying to picture Saitiva, are they just two stories down there?
They're, they're tall too, they have a, they've got a flat roof.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see any problem with going a little higher.
It feels like it's unobtrusive, there's no neighborhoods anywhere nearby.
No.
And I, I kind of wonder if allowing that by right and not artificially limiting ourselves might allow us to attract, you know, some other economic development opportunities without those limits. But I wanted to get your feedback, that would be a difference between this zoning classification and the general commercial.
So.
Sorry, Porter, go ahead.
I'm generally a fan of similar look and feel, and so I think I worry if you go too high, you'll end up with lots of one-stories and lots of three-stories and it'll, it'll be, it'll feel kind of disjointed. That being said, I do like the opportunity for developers to come in or businesses to come in with larger buildings, I think they're, they're cool. And they, they can add a really nice, like, hey, things happen here, kind of, kind of.
Yeah, let the architects have some fun.
But, but I think, I like, you brought up parking, I think I'd rather the parking was the limitation than height.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the other uses that go multi-story is residential, but that's not allowed.
Correct. Yeah, there's no residential anywhere west of Main Street, we, we have the one project, you know, on, on eighteen hundred north. We made that a very specific point of, of consideration and discussion in the general plan. We said, should we continue allowing any more housing west of Main Street? And, you know, the consensus was, there's no parks, there's no trails, there's no transit, it just doesn't make sense. You know, initially that one project was supposed to be mixed-use. And I think that if that had been successful, maybe we would have, you know, entertained and kind of dovetailed into the residential that Logan City is bringing up from the south. But yeah, that was a, that was a point of consideration, we said no. Essentially, east of Wolfpack Way, there would be no more residential in North Logan, we're going to maintain those areas for commercial and manufacturing.
So. So Holiday Inn, is that just two stories?
I was thinking of Holiday Inn.
I was thinking the same thing, I was wondering, is it a short three-story, but I think it's just the two.
Is it really two?
Let's take a look, cause I honestly can't.
Because I like Heather's point, but I also like Porter's point about.
Yeah, both are valid.
We don't want.
Holiday Inn Express is more than, you know, like that.
It's three with a gable.
See, it doesn't, that one doesn't bother me at all, it's set back and.
I, I do wonder if that's thirty-five feet. You know, the way that, the way that the height is defined in the code is measuring to the mean height in the gabled roof. So you're kind of midway through the gable where you actually take that measurement.
That's where you take it.
I, I mean, that sits back, I don't even, I don't think it bothers me, never bothers me.
If you look at this and say, what, what does one more story look like? Uh, you can kind of visualize it, where if you had, instead of this vent, you put another window here, does that fill out of place?
No. If you're going to have height anywhere, I mean, you'd want it there. The, so I'm, I was trying to think through other uses I've seen that do go that high, you've got like, uh, class A office space. Is that allowed?
Yeah, it would absolutely be one of those where office, uh, is, is one of those higher functioning uses. Uh, much more active than, you know, warehouse or otherwise.
I think a medical facility.
Yeah.
Better parking.
Though, though not a hospital, because that's not allowed.
Uh, but, uh, medical facilities are, like a, a hospital complex or campus would not, but, you know, standalone doctor's office could.
But a medical office.
Yeah, I mean, cause you, you've got people there and they need a place to go to, to go to lunch, and so that drives other, other food and beverage and, yeah.
It does lend itself to a vibrant community.
Yeah.
You're gonna have.
And right now we have a lot of green space, but going vertical is a way to preserve.
Yeah. And I, I would argue that it is not our intent to preserve much of any green space along our commercial areas. But, uh, yeah, that, that is a concept that we, we have, uh, all over the city, I think here in the west end, we want to pack it in pretty thick.
Right, but I'm like, going vertical allows for more businesses in the same space.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Is this only a consideration for three stories or like four stories, what's the height?
I think if we were to, if we were to, I mean, that's totally open for discussion, I think a fourth is, is within grasp. The fifth might be something we need to talk a little bit more about. We also need to, to maybe better understand the airport overlay, um, and some of those, those impacts. Um, I studied this a while back, um, it's in our general plan, there's actually an exhibit, let me. Um, the FAA has what's called, they're called part seventy-seven surfaces, and this is, you have, you have to kind of put on your three D glasses to read this map. Because it's not flat, yeah, it's in the context of airspace, uh, which is vertical. So when you look at this, think about an upside down, um, wedding cake. Okay, where the tippy top of the wedding cake is right on the runway, and then it terraces back as you go up and out from the airport. Um, so there's, there's some of these FAA structure height maximum without an FAA notice. That doesn't mean you can't go higher than these heights, it just means you have to notify the FAA. And FAA may have some, some mitigation requirements, typically it means you have to put a, a strobe on a tower. Or, um, there's some things that the FAA just wants to be notified about, so they can update their mapping and their flight path and those types of things, so. I think it's important to, this is just without FAA notice, you can go up to forty-five feet without FAA notice.
Only on the east side of the Main Street.
Over here, you're kind of in the thirty to forty. And I, I have to, I have to say, this is just FYI, I don't know that the FAA does a whole lot to enforce some of these things. And it, this is an impact to the city, it is a, it is an impact for sure. But if there is a way to work with the FAA to get a higher height, work within their parameters, then I don't think we should self-limit ourselves.
So, I'm okay with this going a little bit higher.
The, the definition of height in, in, in what you've got, you, I could put like a space needle, it's very narrow and it, there is no max height listed.
Under.
In, in the language that you show, that you've got in the package today.
Let's see.
It just says for every extra foot you go up, you gotta give some on the side.
Set packs, that's.
So you maybe could go.
I could have like a three hundred foot that is just very narrow.
Yeah.
We don't.
We don't want that.
Good observation, I think that this language actually comes from some of these, these bigger buildings that are closer to a neighborhood. So they say, hey, if you're adjacent to a residential area, you can go higher, but you gotta step back further as you go higher. I think that's actually something maybe we should pull out.
There, 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 there needs to be a max height at which we don't, or are not able to adequately provide fire.
Oh, yeah.
So, so whatever that is, if you spring, if you put sprinklers in, you can go way high, I mean, New York does it, but.
Yeah, this is, this is a chicken and egg thing, do you build the building and then buy the fire truck, do you buy the fire truck and then build a building?
Yeah.
Um, arguably in Logan City Fire District, they've got, you know, seven footers, uh, over by campus, so we are not the ones that are breaking this mold. And I do know that the fire department is aware of the apparatus they need to service those larger buildings. And I think that it's just one of those natural things that they may buy the right equipment as the demand is next.
So, I know this isn't, um, North Logan, how, how tall is the new vet school?
It.
How many stories, not how tall?
I don't know if it's on the street view yet, I drove past it the other day.
I know.
I think it's probably six.
I would say at least four, it's pretty big. I'm like, I think it's three stories.
Yeah, it's, it's not there?
I mean, they have a trash chute going from the upper floor, it's long enough that they need.
There, there was a picture of the project on the green fence around.
Oh, was it? Yeah, they, and I know that they have a, a larger first podium on that first floor.
There it is.
Yeah, this is probably a fifteen foot, maybe a twelve to fifteen foot first story and then it's four.
One, two, three, four, yeah.
Good question.
Anyway, you may want to consider a max height.
Yeah, let me put a note in here real quick.
We don't want the space needle in North Logan.
Maybe you do, that'd be might be fun.
We could get some money out of it.
There's the bungee jumping towers down.
She'd like to see how all of her. For ten dollar fee. It's like thirty dollars.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll make it a point to chat with our consultants on this and, and maybe get some of their thoughts on it.
Well, so that, one more thing, I wonder, do you put a different height based on the side of the road, the east side versus west side? Cause there's a five foot difference per the airport, that airport.
That's true.
Map, and so it was forty-five on one side and forty on the other. And a four-foot building could be anywhere from forty to plus feet.
Yeah, and I, I anticipate on, so if you look at the, let me zoom in a little bit. So you're kind of talking about a transition and a transect, um, from these residential areas. So Wolfpack Way, uh, the east side of Wolfpack Way. We still need to make that determination if we're going to have residential on the east side, if we're going to just keep that on the, I'm sorry. If we're going to put residential on the west side, if we're just going to keep it on the east side. Um, but we, I think had somewhat anticipated putting three stories on this Wolfpack Way corridor as a mixed use. If we're going to have anything vertically integrated mixed use, you have at least a third story. So I think if this is three-story, and then put it up to four here, does that provide enough transition? Or would you want to still see three on the west side, east side of Main Street, then hop up to a fourth on the west?
Four, four on the east, I think.
I don't know if you could do four on the west based on, unless you get permission from the airport.
You just have to make that notice.
I think you could say, I, I think you could say up to five on the west side with the FAA, they just, it's on the developer to going, go higher. Yeah, you could say, do five on the west of Main Street, four on the east, and then three on the, three in transition to Wolfpack. If they want more than that forty-five, they just have to go work it out with the FAA.
Yeah, they'd have to go through that process, there's a form I have to submit.
Terms of land use.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay going to like seven, I, when you, when you, when you think about it, you've got, if you put your far vision hat on, right? You kind of have the old downtown in Logan, but where is the commercial financial district of the valley one day, right?
True.
And so if you allow for some denser office space, vertical, uh, I, you know. I, why, why, I, I want, I don't want it to be ten or twenty, but there's probably a, a number, and the other things will naturally limit it. Size, the parking.
I don't think the other things will naturally limit it, I think the developer will naturally take whatever he can.
Well, they would, for, for example, you know, if they don't have enough area for parking, they could do structured parking, which would allow them to go higher on the structure itself. Maybe what we could do is we could go do a little bit more research on this FAA impact and just see how high can we go before notice isn't even. Uh, and where the FAA just says no, you know, notice can't be satisfactory and, and then just bring that back for discussion.
I like that, cause I'm, I'm with Gavin, I'm thinking down the road, you know, this could be a tech center. With, with some great class A office space, you can pack a lot of people in there and great visibility for the business too, so I think.
And if you're talking about North Logan with a limited tax base for businesses, going vertical is the way to increase that.
Absolutely, increase the density, yep.
Yeah.
And if you look at like the Denver Metro Tech Center, they have multiple commercial, seven, six, seven, eight stories.
Yep.
And I think it's wise to cut off problems down the road if you put it, like, you put in, you can have seven stories, but really. The FAA says four, and so then you have to deal with that, so you might as well put in, get the research done before you put in.
Yeah, they do, there would not be a city, I mean, we may work with them to try to help develop an opportunity move forward, but, yeah. One of the other things, if we're talking big, big picture, um, keep in mind, let's just, let's zoom out even further. Right now, there's, there's a lot of discussion of a sixteenth east, um, highway through the valley as the true, uh, north-south.
East or west?
Sixteen west.
Sixteenth west.
I mean, twenty years ago, tenth west was that bypass, right, and it's quickly becoming, uh, unusable as such, and it was always a dead end at the airport anyways. There is some discussion of a, you know, a, a separated four-lane highway, so kind of like a, a legacy highway. Yeah, where each community had, would have their own off-ramp, so to speak, so the interchanges would be, one, our, our North Logan interchange would be twenty-five hundred north or Airport Road. And, and so that would be kind of our, our key, this is why twenty-five hundred north was such an important discussion as our entrance gateway in the general plan. And so, you know, if you have, if you have a lot of commercial, you know, coming out of the airport, if the airport ever, you know, decides that they want to use it as a. An asset and leverage it and try to use it for, you know, it's, it's full potential, I think. Right now, the airport could be looked at as just a, a pure impact where we don't get any benefit, because, you know, it's not in our, in our boundary. And it's just potentially limits our height and those types of things, but you could also look at it as, hey, this is the key entry corridor and, you know, some hospitality. Office here makes sense, and I do believe that we're well positioned to do so without impacting our existing neighborhoods. Because we do have a plan to transition and use Wolfpack Way as kind of that transect to buffer away from the heavy intensity. On the west end, uh, before we really get into our, our residential neighborhoods.
And the downtown is at five or four?
Uh, the city center could go up to six.
Five and six.
Yeah, there are some things that we would want to work with the developer, there's some desire to get owner, ownership occupancy as a potential, um. Uh, incentive to go up to a six-story, we don't just have apartments, but we have condos and ownership opportunities. Yeah, that's, that's kind of down in this area down here.
And, but I, I, we need to remember that the east side of most, of Wolfpack Way really needs to be the transition point too.
Absolutely.
I mean, we can't put seven-story buildings across the street from the townhouse, I don't think we can say. Seven, eight-story buildings across the street from the townhouses on Wolfpack Way, I don't think that would aesthetically look good, or I, I don't think that would be it. In my opinion, I don't think that would work real well.
So just to take that thought maybe a little bit further, on the, on the east side of Main Street here. If we're at a third story here, maybe we say four on this sliver, and then on the, uh, the other side of. Of Main Street go up to as high as the FAA allows. And that's if, if the developer can accommodate all of their, you know, other site, you know, variables.
That's unfortunate, the FAA gets, is going to get more perspicacity is the further east.
Yeah, the further east, the higher you can go.
Yeah, but I, I like that transition better than boom.
What about, what about a five-story and a three-story, and then, um, no higher than three on this side?
How close is that to the high school?
The high school is right here.
Right there.
I kind of hate that right there.
Thirty-one hundred.
Just so many, so much traffic with all the.
There will be.
I don't like that, but.
That's the high school, thirty-one hundred north is, yeah. So I think we have to keep that in mind, there's a high school. I don't think the big tech companies are going to move in there right across from the high school.
No.
I think they're going to be farther down where there's more commercial happening, so.
I mean, at any rate, there's going to be more traffic, that's just, it just is.
There's going to be more traffic. Anyway, something to consider.
Yeah, well, I think that's great feedback, the height was really what I wanted to get some good feedback on, I think the uses, I think we're all kind of understanding, we want. Less heavy intensity, we want more aesthetically pleasing.
Wanted to clarify, there's no residential use allowed at all, even mixed use.
Nope. Zero, zero, and that was, that was intentional, you know, there, if you look at our parks master planning, there's no green space, there's no trails. There's just no amenities west of Main Street, so we have the one project right here. And, uh, Logan City, their plan is to bring residential all the way up to the North Logan, uh, boundary. So they're not entirely disconnected from a residential development pattern. Yeah, there's, there's, uh, there's no desire to put more west of Maine.
That's just primarily city amenities, is it, is it traffic concern as well?
Uh, as far as residential west of Main Street.
Yeah.
It was just amenities, um, it was the fact that we have very little economic development land available. And when you look at the, the percentages of land available for commercial versus residential, we don't want that ratio to get too out of balance.
The, the other reason is North Logan is the only city in cash flow that can't grow.
Right.
Um, we're landlocked on all four sides.
That's not fair, it's River Heights as well, but they're.
Uh, they can grow a little bit to the east, but we're, we're completely landlocked, we can't go anywhere. Um, and yeah, that balance of the commercial sector is the thing that keeps our property taxes.
Right.
Down so low, uh, relative to their communities and so.
So you don't want, you don't want residential, even with the, the affordable housing issues, we don't, we don't want residential poaching from the commercial opportunities.
Yeah, because once you do that, you can never go back, right?
Now, there is, there is, you know, we do very much have a mixed-use plan, the city center is meant to be that.
Right.
Higher intensity residential with commercial walkable neighborhood type stuff. I, I cannot see where your, your thought is, you know, we have land, let's stack a bunch of houses, you know, where, where land is, is plentiful, but. That was a, that was something we, we discussed long and hard, you know, do we put a little bit more specifically down in this quadrant of town? Do we put maybe some more residential down here? And that discussion between Planning Commission, City Council was, just didn't seem like there was much traction.
It, it's helpful to know the background there, I think that makes sense.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, any other questions on the intent of what this, this zoning classification is trying to do? Um, it is, again, we're trying to just implement the, the goals and policies of the general plan that wanted a better aesthetic, we wanted to improve Main Street overall. So this is kind of that, that first step, I think we do have more work to do on the south and, you know, our commercial general zone. And that'll be forthcoming, but, uh, we wanted to get this on the agenda, start talking about it, we do have. We have some development pressure, we just wanted to make sure we had something, you know, moving forward, you know, to put the general plan, uh, into the, into the regulatory environment. Okay, any other thoughts on this before we move on?
No, let's move on.
All right, so the second item we wanted to talk about, just real quick in work session, um. I, I forget, Porter, do you, you came into the planning commission, um, after the moderate income housing, uh, push from the state. And this will be new for Deidre as well, uh, but a couple of years ago, the state of Utah, they passed a bill requiring municipalities to put a moderate income housing. Element into our general plan. And the intent there was, when, when it was first, the idea was first hatched, the state put together a à la carte menu of goals. And they said, each community has to pick at least three, you pick which three you want, but you have to pick those three, you can't change them, you have to literally copy paste them into your plan. You know, it doesn't matter if they fit or not, thou shalt, right? And so, um, when we first looked at this. And so, um, when we first looked at this, we tried to pick some that. Were, you know, somewhat attainable, somewhat reasonable for our, our community. Um, I'm gonna hop into this housing element real quick. And this is the new, new chapter in our general plan that we just adopted. The first bit is more explanatory, you know, demographics. Um, for our housing situation here. But specifically, when we get into these goals, these are literally. Copy paste from the state. So this goal right here, rezone for densities necessary to facilitate the production of moderate income housing. We were then allowed to break them down into action items, measurables and timelines. This. The measurables and the timeline was a, a follow-up bill. The state legislature said, you need to put specific measurables. And specific timelines to each of your goals. And so every year they've kind of ratcheted down on these to say, okay, they can't just be aspirational. Now you need to have. Measurables. And then after measurables, they said, we want to have timelines and they all have to be done within five years. So you'll see that our timelines are all out to twenty twenty-five and that's because we had a, a five-year, uh, runway to work with. Uh, but specifically why we need to have this conversation today is we have to report to the state every year. Um, for the previous year's, uh, efforts and that has to be submitted to the state before, uh, August thirty-first. So, um, I wanted to get a couple of things just out there for us to discuss because these goals do have. A couple of these workshops that we need to have. One specifically under this, uh, first goal, under action. A two, or sorry, five A two, where it speaks to evaluating applications for zoning map amendment as they are submitted. And consider rezoning to higher densities, while also considering the general plan and other factors. So in, under that action item. There is a task. Um, let's see, that we perform biennial reviews of the previous year's rezone applications. To identify opportunities where the city could facilitate future rezone applications to achieve the production of moderate income housing. These are very, you can tell the way that they were written was very, you know, I don't even know the word, the, the, the verb I'm looking for, but. Um, they were just kind of fluffy, right? Um, so here we are. We need to complete a biennial review of the, of the previous year's rezone applications. Um, just to check the box and tell the state that we, we had done that. I think it is beneficial, but, uh, we are just trying to. Make sure we do this. Um, so I put together the list of the rezone applications we've reviewed in this last year.
Yeah, that's smart when that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, there's two. So these are actually within the last couple of months. Um, they came pretty quick successively. We didn't actually receive any applications for. Rezone while we were doing the general plan. Um, one for the animal hospital on, uh, on fourth east. I'm sorry, sixth east. We basically said, hold on, let's get through the general plan. We were, we're mid-general plan. We don't really want to consider any zoning. Changes while we're in the middle of this planning process. Uh, but for last year, between July of last year and July of this year, we've had these two. And I'm, I'm sure these are fairly, um, fresh on most memory. Um, Porter, I think you were here for both of these as well. Um, Deidre, these are, these are going to be new for you, but we had two rezone applications. They were all, they were both very similar. And if we look on that zoning map, um, let's go to twenty-five hundred north and eighth east. Where we have our roundabout project going on right now. So the Susan Smart property here, it was, let's open the zoning map and. It was RE one. So it is now showing as R one twenty. The rezone request was to do, uh, an upzoned R one twenty to allow a future home to be built on the back parcel. Our future parcel in the backyard. And so when we were first looking at this, the general plan in this area calls for us to look for. Infill opportunities. And this was a, a fairly low hanging fruit where there was already frontage, easy access to utilities. An underutilized backyard. It was adjacent to existing R one twenty zoning. This is one of them. Um, and to be quite honest, if this subdivision were to occur and this were to be, uh, were to become a building lot, it would sell for probably. Seven hundred K before a home was all said and done. That's nowhere near affordable, uh, to a moderately. Uh, a moderate income family. So we'd have to be down in, in the low three hundreds, high two hundreds to even scratch. The affordability issue. Okay, so.
So is that a, I mean. Okay, we can do the goals and do the things, but we can't dictate the price. So.
Correct. So this is one of those things where we have to, we have to report back to the state and say, we considered to, we approved both of them. None, neither of these are going to produce moderate income housing. It just is.
Do we have to say that last part?
Increase density, but.
I don't know. I'll have to look to see, because every year they, they change the reporting form slightly and what they're looking for, for information. Um, I don't know, they have to divulge that much, but I think it would be beneficial to help them understand, hey, this, this was a rezone request. It wasn't city initiated. It was, you know, the request of the applicant. It was, it was approved, but it will not produce that type of housing. And it's the exact same story on the other one that we, we looked at as well. So let's just go south a little bit. Same thing, eighth east. We're looking here. Eighteen hundred north, eighth east. This, the, the zoning map hasn't been updated yet, uh, because it's still new enough. It was just a couple of weeks ago that we approved this. But these six parcels will be R one ten. Um, which, when you look at it, it looks like a spot zone, but those parcels, as we've discussed, have been in existence since the fifties in their existing configuration. With existing homes there. And what that zone change did allow for, let me turn off this so you can see. These homes are already pre-existing. The zone change just allows these three homes to be legally conforming, uh, to the zone applied to them. Right now, right now, they would be illegal, um, because they're too small for an eight, ten, ten acre, ten acre residential or agricultural. But what it does allows for this, this parcel here to put a home on it. And there's just the vacant. Vacant parcel. It's been that way since the fifties. But with the zone change, it would allow for it to be planted as a single building lot and a single home to be placed. This one's a little bit closer where it's an R one ten, so it's quarter acre, but even still you're in a close to half million dollar home before, before it's done. So again, these are the two that we had. This is a discussion we need to have as a planning commission, just to kind of keep the realities in check of. You know, what our decisions do and don't allow for. Um, and it's one of the goals in, in the general plan that we, we look at this.
Is, is there a definition of moderate income?
Yep. It's the county AMI. So cash counties, area median income. So let me just pull that up. Come on AI, you can do better. Seventy-eight, three. So when you look at seventy-eight, three, uh, what is affordable is no more than thirty percent of your take-home pay. So if you take seventy-three is the gross and then you take out your taxes and say, what's thirty percent of that and how much can you spend on a. On a monthly basis, you're sub-two thousand on your mortgage. Uh, most folks that are buying a half million dollar home at seven percent are three to four thousand a month. So it's. It's double essentially the affordability rate. So folks are spending instead of thirty percent of their income on housing, they're spending fifty. And they're having to work two jobs and they're neglecting their healthcare and their retirement savings and their kids, you know, development. All sorts of societal issues. And it's, it's something that will pass from generation to generation if we don't get a hold of. So. The American dream is, is very much slipping away at these, these, uh, discrepancies in housing affordability. And, uh, in income is not keeping pace, has not kept pace for. Uh, I have to look at the graph again, but at least the past two decades has not kept pace with the, the home prices. So when you look at the graph, home, home prices have kind of gone exponential on their curve and your incomes have just kind of crept up a little bit. And that's where that, that, uh, gap is just, it just keeps on growing. So. That, that's the reality of, of the fact. Um, there are a couple of units in Nibley, uh, single bedroom condominiums. That are close to being affordable. Um, it's a visionary product. It's one of the, the only ones in the valley that are even. Even close. But they're still not affordable based on that definition of affordability.
About three hundred and fifty K.
Yeah, yeah, three hundred and fifty. I think that that one bedroom condo was, uh, like. Right around three hundred. I'd, I'd have to go back and look.
Are they all sold? Like, that's the thing though, people want a starter home. And so I'm like, where can we do that in North Logan that we can give them?
Give them that.
Smaller. Yeah.
Yeah. And that's something I need to bring you up to speed on. Um, our city center master plan does call for, you know, much smaller housing product. Attached housing product. And our goal is to try to get as much of that as owner occupied and deed restricted as possible. Um, where it'll get closer. Uh, but again, the cost of, of building a, a multi-story condo building is not cheap either. And so it's, it's not the same as, you know, i- if you were to build something that size on a single family residential. There's not much more cost savings, to be honest. So it's, this is a huge issue that we as a planning commission are not going to be able to solve here locally by ourselves. There's labor costs, there's material costs. There's land costs, there's, uh, just income generally. I mean, we can't, we can't change that as a planning commission. We can try to incentivize economic development. Bring in high paying jobs. That's one thing, but, uh, every community is, is vying for those opportunities as well. Um, but just keep that in mind. What's hard is, you know, we have, whenever we have a rezone application come before a planning commissioner or a city council. You have, uh, you have the folks who have been established in their, their housing for decades and they don't feel, they don't comprehend the affordability. Like those who are just trying to get in. And they come and they are very vocal. So that's something to. Recognize when you have a, a room full of folks that may have an opinion. Um, just kind of keep that in, in the back pocket.
This would look like the condo situation where they, they can be owned.
Yeah, good question. So.
Step in versus like even a townhome. Seems a little more affordable to buy a condo, get a little equity and then sell that to go to a starter.
That's right.
I feel like that's sometimes a first step for people.
That, that is my story. Um, I'll, I'll tell my story again because I feel like it's important. I, I, when I graduated grad school, my wife and I. We bought a condo in West Jordan. It was one sixty-one at the time and I just knew I didn't want to pay rent. I just. I had no idea what I was really buying and, and how this would kind of set up my future, but I bought versus rented. And we stayed there for three years and rode the, the equity wave, uh, sold it at two twenty-five. Put a whole big chunk on our student loans and put a little bit into our next piece of real estate. Did the same thing, um, in a small six thousand square foot lot. In Arizona, single family, small lot, you know, it's a little posted stamp, but we owned it. Uh, kept it for a little over a year, um, decided that Arizona wasn't the place for us and came back and did the same thing, sold it for a profit, which. That's not typical. You don't make money in real estate with only one year of, of ownership, but we did. Paid off the rest of our student loans and, uh, bought right before COVID, which, you know, if you look at the people who bought before COVID and those after, it's. It's an enormous.
Yeah.
Enormous difference. So, and we would never have been there if we hadn't been able to buy that first piece of real estate. And that product type doesn't exist here in Cache Valley. Uh, we were in a three-plex condo and HOA managed and it was where we owned paint to paint. Carpet to ceiling. That was our deed. That was our legal description. We didn't own the real property underneath us. We didn't own any dirt. We just owned living space. But it was our, uh, it was our deed that we were able to u- use to gain some equity. So that's, that's what the general plan goal is. We want to try to, if we're going to go smaller and attached, we, we try our best to get owner occupancy. As much as possible. In the city center, that is a, a key goal as well. However, the realities is where. We recognize that there will be some rental product in that area of town. And it's going to be our goal to try to maximize that ratio, um, as much as possible. I did have a, a discouraging conversation yesterday with a local developer when I tried to explain that goal to him and he just. Used the word foolish and that was really hard to, to hear, but that's where we're at.
Foolish that, then that's what we want?
It, it, it's one of those things where I think folks don't comprehend that because it's not common here. Um, they're not used to that product type. They haven't, they haven't. Understood that product type. But it is more prevalent in more, uh, dense areas. And I think that's really important that those areas are. Studied because they're just further down the line than we are and we will be there eventually. So I, I think these are all just things that we need to kind of keep in mind. Uh, the more you serve on the planning commission, you go to conferences and here. You'll see more than the general public sees about housing affordability. So we, we have these conversations from time to time, just because moderate income housing is, you know, part of our, uh, part of our, uh, general plan. The way that the state went about it is tough because it was a mandate. They said, do this and do it exactly how we say to do it. Um, so that was tough. It, it is a tough pill to swallow. But we as a, a planning commission, um. We want to make sure we're compliant. We want to do things our local way as well. I feel like we are, we are trying to do that. I do anticipate that the moderate income housing, um, process in state code as it exists today, it will not be going forward. The state is now focusing on a statewide, a statewide housing plan. And we don't quite know how that will trickle down to the local level quite yet. Uh, but I'm sure there'll, there'll be more, more to come. This may be our last year of annual reporting. So.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, our community is any different and won't have any different results than a whole bunch of others.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's not like.
Unless we're willing to do something different.
That's right.
But I mean, Washington County, I mean, all those places there, it's the same.
Same, same, same. Yeah. This is a huge systemic issue in, in this, in the country as a whole. It's not just localized. So, uh, this is something I think, I feel like we need to keep in our mind. You know, we are educated on the topic more than others. Um, it is not in, you know, the developer's interest necessarily to, to produce that product type, but, uh. Hey, if they want to build, that's our goal. That's our, our ordinance. And I feel like that is in the benefit of our community. So we'll keep that in mind.
Any indication on if, if there's demand for it? Why is it not profitable? I mean.
That's a good question. I, I really think it comes down to land costs, materials. And by the time you actually put a project together and get it vertical. You, you take all those costs and add them up. I still think those are playing against it.
Yeah. I, I think it has to do with investment type as well, right? Cause a lot of people with deep pockets are building apartment complexes and then getting a residual income from renting.
They want to own it in perpetuity.
Right. Whereas selling it. You know, you have the cash again, you have to do something with it again. So I think that's part of it as well.
That's exactly the conversation I had the other day.
Yeah.
I'm like, the state legislature likes to build themselves.
Yeah. And I get it. You know, if you're in a position and you want to invest, you know, it's highest return, it's passive income in perpetuity. You know, I get it. That's, that's an attractive proposition.
Sell half the condos.
That's what the downtown.
Talked about this on the city center.
And it's even more complex than that. I mean, developers, they are not wrong when they say that. Their liability on a project like that is challenging. They're on the hook for seven years on class action lawsuits. Um, they're, they really struggle to get financing through a bank or any lending institution unless they have a really high, um, capital stack. Of cash. So the bank is not as heavily leveraged in that. There's a lot of things in these that. Making condos is tough. You know, they have to pre-sell a certain number of them before the bank will actually sign off on the loans. You have to have people who have signed up. To buy the property before the project is even financed. The state's working on some of these things, uh, to give credit to the legislature. They are working on some of these private side issues that are making it difficult for a developer to even comprehend or not comprehend, but to consider. A project like that.
I, I just think both of these conversations tonight lead me to think we really need economic development, right? Hey, do you have an economic developer who can go bird dog this? And you can go find developers who specialize in this. Bring them to our community, uh, both on the commercial side, bring the businesses here, but also bring the residential investors as well.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a huge benefit.
Agreed. And that's, that's something that the city is, we're, we're, we're leveraging, we're trying to, to push on that. This, we're, we're really pushing hard on the city center. Right now. It's not a lot that we can feed, we can fill you in on, on those elements quite yet, but it is, it is a goal of ours. The other thing that we need to talk about with our monitoring of housing plan as a formal conversation with the planning commission is a review of the accessory dwelling units. That we have approved this past year. Um, we as a community, we were one of the first to allow, uh, detached accessory dwelling units in the backyard. Uh, the state legislature did mandate that communities allow internal accessory dwelling units statewide. But we did, we went a step further and say, like, if we're going to allow them in the basement, let's, let's be a little more creative. So we do allow detached as well. And a lot of folks were kind of concerned that if and when we approved, um, ADUs, that they would just be everywhere and that our neighborhoods would just fill in. And there'd be issues, but the, the fact of the matter is, we issued one detached ADU this past year. Um, it's this one here. And I've, this list is a little bit difficult to read because I add to this list when I find accessory apartments that have been. Unpermitted. When I find them, I add them to the list just so we know that they exist. When I find them, I add them to the list just so we know that they exist. Uh, but formal, so this is a building permit, so building permit 29 back in 2025. I guess we're still in 25, but that was a, a base. This was a basement ADU, internal accessory dwelling unit. And then on the detached, we haven't had any since 24. Um, I did find one, this was a conditional use permit back in the day before we had it as a permitted use. So I mean, when you look at, you know, we, this is permitted by right. We changed last year. So we used to be conditional use permit. We said, let's, let's make this easier. We made it a permitted use. And there's just not a lot of traction. Folks have not really taken us up on this option to create additional housing. Um, uh, it may pick up as the housing crisis gets worse. And this is really the only option to create some more, you know, living space, but for now. Now the state does require us to report on this every year. And so we'll say, hey, we have one, you know, ADU. But that's where we're at. So I don't know that there's a whole lot more we can do to incentivize them. We allow them, they're permitted by right. They just have to get a building permit. Um, there's not much, there's not much in the way. Yeah.
I think we, we even did advertise, it was in the newsletter.
Yeah. I mean, we do, we do like highlights on ordinances from time to time to say, hey, did you know we do allow for ADUs?
Yeah, we, we mentioned that this was available. I remember in one of the.
True.
You know, I just don't know that it's folks that are in a single family home, the idea of, you know, putting another resident in the backyard is. I think if they're established and they can afford what they're in, it's not their primary goal. I think it's a good tool to allow for folks to age in place or to have the mother-in-law live, you know, next door if, if they need some closer attention or kids that are just trying to, you know, get onto college and the next step in life. I think it's a great tool for that. But we're not really seeing it being used as, you know, a tool for people to create additional housing. Um, I think that folks that can't afford a home or a mortgage payment, they're not really looking at this as a way to supplement their mortgage payment for the first 10 years or until they take that next step in their career. And their housing cost isn't as much of a burden to them as they, they grow in their income. That, that hasn't been what I've seen.
But and with large homes, with larger families and they go away, the internals are more, are, are more, gonna be more obvious.
Yeah.
You have more empty space. So.
Yeah. I do have a lot of folks call us and ask, hey, there's this house on the market and there's a basement apartment. Can I buy this and rent both spaces? Add to unrelated individuals. So it wouldn't be owner occupied. And that, that's somebody who has the means to buy, you know, a second or a third or a fourth piece of property and just put it on the rental market. So that's institutional ownership. That's, that's kind of edging out those who actually need the housing. I mean, I provides housing as a rental unit, but not owner occupied. I get those calls quite frequently and I have to tell them, sorry, but no, our ordinance says owner occupied. We actually had a code enforcement case this past year where somebody moved out. And rented both the upstairs and the downstairs, unrelated entities. And I said, hey, guys, that's a duplex. It's multifamily. It's, it's not single family or zoning anymore. So that, that is an issue where we see folks wanting to buy properties and rent both spaces separately. Kind of getting away from the intent of the ADU ordinance. So I get those calls quite a bit. But we wanted to just kind of bring this back, let you know, this last year, slow permitting on ADUs. And, uh, we'll report that back to the state, but it's just something to, to bring back to your attention. Okay. This next year, it'll be interesting. Do we continue with a moderate income housing plan? Is, are we going to be required to? Uh, whether is our participation requirement in the statewide housing plan? I don't know. That'll be a big topic of discussion in this next, uh, this next cycle of, of bills.
I think the legislature, if they're going to come up with a moderate income amount, you know, I mean, it's kind of hard for us to work with that.
Yeah. There's a lot of shoveling responsibility down to the localities. Um, but it's, it's much more challenging than, than what we can do just with zoning alone. So zoning is, it is, local regulation is a cost that's built into housing, but it is certainly not the only cost.
This ADU, this ADU, uh, list is interesting to me. After all the time we spent working on it, it's just as much, it's interesting.
I think it's been good. It has pushed us to, to think about our city center differently. I mean, there are benefits, there are things. Income housing, uh, that are, that are good. I don't think that we really loved being forced into it. I don't think any municipality loved that. Uh, like for, for example, now if we don't report and if we're not in compliance, we get fined on a daily basis. It's to that point of we're being poked. Instead of incentivized with, with incentives. So hopefully things are, are a little bit different going forward, but we'll see what that looks like.
Okay. That's it. That's it. Thanks Scott. How about any staff business or discussion?
Um, I don't, we do have a kind of a, an awkward agenda, not agenda, but schedule for July, just given a holiday. So just be aware. Um, we have one meeting on the 10th. That meeting will be an important meeting because we will be reviewing our first draft of the form-based code for the city center. Um, we have a draft. We're gonna just tweak it a little bit before we send it out, but it would be beneficial to have you guys read through that and then come prepared for that discussion because it's, it's a big document. And you'll want to not, not feel like you haven't wrapped your head around some of it. We don't expect you have it memorized or fully comprehend everything. It'll be a first look and then it is a draft. But it, it is something you want to read through. So, uh, that'll be on the 10th. We may have additional items since it's the only meeting in July, but that's our, our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any planning commissioner business or discussion? Nobody? Great. Our next meeting, Scott said July 10th, um, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
They moved and.
A second.
Moved by, um, Gavin and signed it by Porter to adjourn. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?